That they want. And before, before we begin, I would like to welcome and thank President Dr. Vander Hooven, the president of Wachusett Community College for having us to this beautiful space. And I want to thank Commissioner Shea for inviting us to her lovely place of work. So, President, would you like to come just say hello?
Yes. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming this evening. It's a great honor to have you here. Thank you to Dr. Shea. It's a formal environment, so I'm saying Dr. Shea, Kim, Kim, Dr. Shea. I, it's really an important time here at the community college, as it is for all of the community colleges in Massachusetts. As you may be aware, there are lots of new policies and financial plans and things that are underfoot that are trying to make community college education more affordable for residents in Massachusetts. And one of them that began last fall is called Mass Reconnect. And Mass Reconnect provides free community college for anybody 25 and above in the Commonwealth who has not already received a degree. There are little stipulations there. This spring semester, as a result, not just of Mass Reconnect, but a lot of efforts that our folks here at the college have been going through to try to support our students. We currently have 24% more students than we did at this time last year. 24%. And I believe that's going to continue to increase as we move forward. At this point last year, we had not yet begun registration for the summer term. As of two weeks ago, we had already enrolled more credits for this coming summer than we had all of last summer. So when we focus on sectors of higher education, sectors of education that have been historically underfunded, and we actually put that concerted effort towards creating equity, it's successful, and people will participate. The things that come along with that are the challenges that we have seen, and in particular, for women who are enrolled, who are having trouble with transfer, dependable transportation, with affordable housing, and perhaps even more so in affordable childcare options. So we've been doing a lot of things here at the college to really pinpoint services that will make it more effective for students to be able to continue and to be successful. But this, at this moment, I feel torn because we're creating an opportunity for more Massachusetts residents to engage in an education, to, to be able to pursue a career. But we also have to make sure that the support mechanisms are in place in order to have them be successful. And that is very challenging. So when I know that we're hosting events like this and conversations like this, and this is our, I think, our second hosting, we were over at Lemonster the, the last time, we are, as the region's community college, emphasizing the term "community" within our title, and also our role within North Central Massachusetts to find solutions to these challenges and solutions to these opportunities. So, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for having this conversation here. And I appreciate everybody's efforts in this. Thank you.
So, thank you so much. I am Sarah Glenn Smith, the Chair of the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. I was appointed three years ago by Senate President Spilka, and I reside in Holliston. It is so great to be with you all. I am pleased at such a wide variety of representatives, of, of committee members, of local residents, organization stakeholders, et cetera, were able to attend both in person and online. And a special thank you again to Dr. Shea for having us here and to Mount Wachusett Community College. The Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women was legislatively created in 1998 as an independent state agency seeking to advance equality for women across the state and to promote their rights and opportunities. The commission consists of 19 volunteer commissioners who are appointed by the governor, the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, and the Caucus of Women's legislators. The commission represents and recognizes all women, regardless of their age, race, color, creed, abilities, language, socioeconomic status, immigration status, sexual orientation, or gender assigned at birth. Together, we, our purpose is to provide a permanent, effective voice for women throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But we can't do this without all of you. The MCSW seeks your input as we work toward advancing the status of women in Worcester, Franklin, and Upper Middlesex County, as well as across the state. After today's event, we'll be circulating a survey, so we do hope you take the opportunity to share your voice and feedback with us. I will now ask my sister commissioners to briefly introduce themselves, starting with those in person and then those with us virtually.
Hi, my name is Christine Monska. I'm the Secretary of the Commission, and I'm also Chair of the Girls Empowerment and Leadership Initiative. I am originally from Western Mass, all over Western Mass. And now I reside in Auburndale, but I work in New Bedford. And I was appointed by the Caucus of Women Legislators about four years ago, so I'm now serving in my second term.
Hi, everyone. I am Kim Shea, and I was appointed Commissioner, I think it was about a year and a half ago at this point, by the Caucus of Women Legislators. I am also the Dean of Nursing and Health Sciences at Mount Wachusett Community College, so I welcome you all on behalf of both entities. And I am the Secretary for the Legislative and Public Policy Commission.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tanisha Arena, and I was appointed by the Caucus of Women Legislators in 2021. So I'm getting ready to come around on my second term. I am the Treasurer. I am originally from Connecticut, but I live in Springfield, so it was a little hike coming out here.
And starting with Commissioner Shaw, can I have the Commissioners online please introduce themselves?
Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Sonya Shaw. I am, and actually from Lunenburg. I now live in Natick. I, and my mother went to the Mount to get her associate's degree. So I have been a Commissioner for a little over a year, and I work in Sudbury, Massachusetts.
Mr. Fox?
Yes, hi. My name is Jean Fox. I live in Free Town. I was appointed by the Speaker. In my third term, I'm currently Vice Chair of Program and Planning, and I'm super excited to be here. Thank you.
Commissioner Tadaverty?
Hi.
Hi, everyone. This is Divya Tadaverty. I was appointed by the Caucus of Women Legislators about a year, year and a half at this point. I live in Wilmington. And yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Hall? You were appointed by whom? What? Who you were appointed by?
Good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. I'm Audrey Hall. I'm in my fifth year of being on the commission, and I was appointed by Senate President Karen Spilka. Nice to be here with all of you tonight.
Thank you for coming despite the traffic and the rain. So it's nice to see you. I know there were, there were a few challenges today. I'd also like to welcome our regional commissioners and Commissioners Emerita, if you don't mind just giving us a wave and introducing yourself in the chat. And finally, a special welcome to the elected officials and public servants joining us here today in person as well as online. I will invite you to introduce yourselves if you are interested, perhaps starting with Representative Higgins.
Hi, everyone. Representative Natalie Higgins. I am the State Rep in the Fourth Worcester District, the City of Lemonster.
Thank you so much for coming. I don't know. Bear with me as I go between Zoom and in person. We'll be moving quickly this evening, so please be sure that we have your contact information so we can follow up with you. If you have written testimony, we'll hope that you also share it with us, either via email or leave it with us with the post-event survey. All of that goes into our reports that then we take back to our appointing authorities to be able to act on the, the narratives that all of you guys bring and the stories that you share with us today. At every hearing, I quote Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, and I'd like to do so again tonight, because I think the statement really crystallizes the work of this commission. And she says, "Justice is about making sure that being polite is not the same thing as being quiet. In fact, oftentimes, the most righteous thing you can do is to shake the table." So we are here to shake the table with you tonight. Welcome and thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Shea.
Thank you, Chair Glenn. And I know, President Vander Hooven, you're shocked about us shaking the table. So, as I stated earlier, my name is, is Kim Shea, and it is a pleasure to be with you this evening. So to fulfill our mission, the commission conducts regional public hearings, just as we are right now, across the state to collect testimony and opinions on women's issues and concerns. Our public hearings provide a safe and open space for all women in their communities to be heard and to share your lived experiences and the issues that impact your daily lives. Any subject surrounding issues that women face or obstacles that hinder the ability for all women to experience equity are welcome topics. This hearing is a public meeting and an opportunity to be yourself, to find others like you, and to share your story in a way that will positively influence this work that we do on behalf of all women across the Commonwealth. The MCSW works to create change in the lives of women, and your narratives guide our policy and advocacy platform. The MCSW's charter is clear: We exist to empower the women of the Commonwealth. We are the bridge between the issues you face and the decision-makers who have the ability to make change, alter or prioritize policy changes to make our lives easier. In the past, our hearings have brought attention to such issues as economic independence and self-sufficiency, domestic violence, access to education, and resources that support women and their families, and more. Testimony gathered at public hearings such as this directly informs the commission's legislative agenda and policy priorities that we advocate for year-round. We can't do this work without all of you. Thank you in advance for being here and for sharing your stories.
Today's agenda will introduce who we are, why we're here today, and why your voices matter so much. On behalf of the MCSW, we would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held in Gardner, Massachusetts, the traditional land of the Wabanaki and Penecook people. We pay our respects and show our gratitude. You may be nervous about being here today, but I'll tell you, at the last hearing, we had four or five 12-year-olds got up. So if they can do it, we can definitely do it. I do hope to see you, to set you at ease when I say that your voice matters. Your being here matters to us, and we make it matter to everyone that we can, that we speak to and bring your stories to. Your input directly informs our work to advance women and girls across the Commonwealth. Public testimony is when you or any members of the general public want to tell us what they know and what their lived experience is like. If you can't afford childcare, we want to hear about it so we can prioritize legislation, endorse bills, et cetera, to increase tax credits, or care employees, and more. The purpose of public testimony is to gather facts and hear from the general public, because the general public votes. You can make your testimony here today, either by coming, either on Zoom or by coming up to a mic here. You can also submit written testimony to the MCSW at any time. We incorporate this into our annual reports, research and data, and policy recommendations that go directly to those that can make a difference here. We, we make all of our, our recommendations to our appointing authorities, like the governor and the Caucus of Women's legislators. We welcome you to state your name and town clearly and speak for three to five minutes on the issue that has brought you here today. Tonight, we will hear from you all about what issues that are important to you, to you and in your community. Each speaker will be given three, three to five minutes for their public testimony, and if needed, we'll give a gentle reminder. I'm really bad at that, so I might not, but I will try, to give you a gentle reminder to, just to make sure that everyone who has joined us can be heard. This is a hybrid hearing, so we want to thank you, thank you to those joining us on Zoom from all corners of the Commonwealth. We'll also be hearing from some folks testifying virtually, and we will do our very best to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak. Remember to mute your mic if you're not speaking to show respect for your fellow participants. And now, without further ado, I'm going to move on to begin our testimony. So afterwards, we do encourage all in attendance to share their testimonies with us. Again, please remember to share them if you can. And I will call our first person to provide testimony, who is Miko Nakagawa. And if I do pronounce your last name wrong, please, please correct me.
This is fine. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Miko Nakagawa. I have been a nurse at Lemonster Hospital for 26 years. I am a resident of Athol. I brought my kids up to play hockey in Gardner. And I want to talk about women's health care. I'm really concerned, as I'm sure just about everybody in this room knows, our birthing center closed on September 26. And I really haven't seen much for umbrella services. There's pretty much nothing. I'm sure you guys have all heard the stories. There's been an Uber baby in Memorial's parking lot. There was a Gardner family who delivered their baby in a hotel in Worcester because they went and they, it was confirmed she was in labor, but she wasn't progressed far enough to stay at Memorial because they're so overwhelmed. And they were told to go home. And the father was smart enough to say, "We're not going home." And they weren't even in the hotel very long. There have been field deliveries, especially in Fitchburg. One mother told one of my friends who's a firefighter, "What do you mean, you're not bringing me to Lemonster?" She had no idea that we were already closed. The devastating impact, and we're just seeing the beginning, we only closed in September. And it's going to result in deaths, and mom deaths, baby deaths, other people's deaths because of the ambulances that are going to be out in the field and, you know, delivering babies and can't get to somebody having a stroke quickly enough. We all know there's also a shortage of paramedics out there. So I would like to know, what has the state started doing for studies? Because we were told there were going to be studies, so have these studies started? I would like to know what kind of transportation is being arranged for the family members in North Central who have no transportation to get to Worcester from North Central, to get to Gardner from Fitchburg, if you're in labor, to get to Concord from Lemonster or Fitchburg. We live in a lower socioeconomic area, and we're not seeing a whole lot for services. And we're talking about this portion of North Central. Now, you look at Athol, forget it, right? That's still part of North Central. We're not treated like we're part of North Central. We have nothing. It's, it's really scary world up here in North Central for women's health care. And, and I mean, you're just talking about moms and, and, you know, OBGYN, but we're lacking everything. We're lacking primary care. We're lacking cardiology. We're lacking everything. We need help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call Kimberly Connors. Kimberly, are you with us? All right, I'm going to come back to Kimberly. So I'm going to move to a virtual testimony. Dawn Brooks?
Hi, there. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening. I'm a medical oncologist. I live in the Berkshires. I'm also a member of the Berkshire County Commission on the Status of Women. I'm speaking to you today to advocate for two pieces of state legislation, namely legislation regulating nondisclosure agreements and no rehire provisions in the setting of discrimination settlements to reduce the harm of workplace discrimination against women as well as other historically marginalized groups. Many studies indicate that sexual discrimination, including sexual harassment, remains a problem in many workplace settings, one of these being healthcare, where it's particularly widespread. Studies also indicate that most women subjected to discrimination remain silent about the abuse due to fear of negative repercussions of speaking up. Colleagues I've spoken with have all reported fear they could lose their job, as well as the ability to find a new job if they spoke up about discrimination. I can testify to the validity of these fears, having personally felt forced to leave two different healthcare systems in Massachusetts due to the highly marginalizing and retaliatory manner in which my concerns of discrimination were handled. I'm going to just refer back to the last speaker. Unfortunately, healthcare, a lot of things that happen in healthcare lack ethics. It's a very sad truth. Several states, including Vermont, New York, and Maine, have passed legislation regulating nondisclosure agreements, or NDAs, and banning no rehire provisions in the setting of discrimination settlements, reflecting the recognition that discrimination and retaliation persist despite existing anti-discrimination legislation. NDAs in the setting of discrimination settlements typically bar victims from revealing details of their experience of workplace discrimination and retaliation, as well as the settlement reached with their employer. These legal tactics reduce pressure on organizations to address discrimination by allowing them to hide their actions from their employees and the public more widely. NDAs also further harm victims who wish to be free to discuss their experience with others as a means to heal from their injuries, to raise public awareness, or to hold their public, public, their employer publicly accountable. Legislation can allow victims to elect this settlement, including NDA, if they desire privacy. Without penalizing them, they choose at some future time to speak publicly. No rehire clauses as part of a discrimination settlement bar victims from future employment with the employer. This worsens the original injury. If working for that employer becomes in future the best or only job opportunity a victim might have, such clauses thereby further hurt an individual already harmed by discrimination and undermine workplace diversity, equity, and inclusivity. They also deprive a community of the services of talented and principled individuals, a social injury amplified in more rural communities such as mine, Berkshire County, where it's harder to attract diverse workers with specialized skills. I'll just mention that I'm the only female medical oncologist who's ever worked in Berkshire County, and I'm not working here anymore. I should point out that if I've been subjected to an NDA or no rehire provision in the setting of an NDA, that's a fact to which I would not be allowed to testify legally. So I emphasize I neither claim nor deny whether either of these punitive settlement provisions applies to me personally. However, awareness that NDAs and no rehire clauses are widely used by perpetrators both to punish those who speak up and to escape public scrutiny has prompted several states to pass laws regulating or banning these punitive measures. I hope the commission will consider advocating for the Massachusetts Legislature to join other states in adopting these legal measures to bolster currently inadequate protection for victims of discrimination who face a steep uphill battle once they take the daunting first step of speaking up. You would think a physician is powerful, but not in a very hierarchical setting where unfortunately discrimination can persist. Thank you very much for your attention and the opportunities to speak this, this evening.
Thank you much. Thank you very much for having the courage to come and speak with something that, that clearly impacted you personally. I do want to call out that as speakers mentioned, something that there is a current legislation, a pending legislation article, or something, education, our very talented and hardworking staff at the MCSW are posting links in the chat so that you can learn more and support different bills as, as you are interested in. Yes, yes. So, Commissioner Hall?
I'd like to ask Dawn if she knows of any specific legislation, any numbers, House or Senate bills that are currently before the legislature that she's advocating for, that perhaps we could take a look at. If we have the numbers, that would be very helpful.
So I'm going to read them because they were put, they're, they're here. So it is Bills 192 and then S2047. S2047.
I, and I don't believe the no rehire provision has been considered in Massachusetts, but yes, the legislation to regulate NDAs has been proposed actually for several years, four or five years without progress.
Thank you. And please, if we have questions, absolutely ask them. Next, I'd like to welcome Lisa Black. Lisa, I think you may be muted if you're...
All right, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Lisa Black, and I live in Lexington. I'm co-founder of Massachusetts Women for Sex-Based Rights and a team member of Democrats for an Informed Approach to Gender. However, I'm here today speaking only for myself. On International Women's Day 2022, Joanna Cherry, a Scottish politician and women's rights advocate, said the following words in the House of Commons in regard to the meaning of the word "woman." "What you cannot define, you cannot protect. And what you cannot name cannot be properly discussed and debated. That is why the erasure of sex-based language from our statute book and public and private policymaking should be resisted." Implicit in her statement is the fact that what you cannot name, you cannot count. And what you cannot count cannot be accounted for and protected. I'm testifying here today because I would like MCSW to advocate for the inclusion of sex as a data variable in all legislation which aims to identify and remedy inequities faced by women and girls. There are currently at least nine such bills pending in the legislature. There are currently at least nine such bills pending in the legislature. These bills concern, among other matters, salary range transparency, the promotion of diversity on public boards and commissions, eliminating disparities in mental health treatment, enhancing outreach to women, veterans, and assessing the impact of COVID-19 on women and girls. None of these bills name sex as a data variable. Some mention gender identity and others mention gender, which might just be a polite term for sex, or it might also mean gender identity. Two bills use the word female, but one of these bills defines female as anyone who identifies as female, and the other offers no clarification. Lastly, the word woman is used in two bills, but no definition is provided. However, it's reasonable to assume that it is being used in the same way that female is used, as an indicator of gender identity and not sex. And while it is true that the collection and analysis of data on gender identity is important, it is also true that collecting data on sex is equally, if not more, important, and that data on gender identity should never be substituted for or conflated with data on sex. For example, without data on sex, women and girls who identify as non-binary, agender, gender-fluid, or gender queer would be excluded from data used to assess mental health treatment disparities between natal females and natal males. Without clarity and accuracy in naming sex as a data variable and without disaggregating sex data from gender identity data, these bills will fail to identify inequities and promote the interests of all women and girls as a sex class. I respectfully ask that Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women be accountable to the women and girls of the Commonwealth by advocating for sex-based data collection in law and policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Suzanne Lewandowski. Suzanne. All right, I'm going to go to the next person. How about Ellen Pratt? And just to explain this process, what we have is we people that pre-register and then say they're going to testify. So depending on the rain, traffic, et cetera, they may not be here, but if if they show up, we'll try to call on them again. And then even if you didn't sign up, if you are either online or in person, once we finish those that registered, we absolutely open the floor and we expect that. And that's about half our testimony every hearing. So next, I am going to, Ellen Pratt is not here, is that correct? Okay. So next, I will go back to Zoom and welcome Marsha Matthews.
Thank you. I'm going to speak about SOGI and the schools, S-O-G-I. Schools should not teach gender identity as a fact instead of a highly contested belief with no basis in science. Gender is a cult like Scientology. If teachers promote this and keep secrets and make decisions on behalf of parents, they compromise children's safety and well-being. Teachers are not qualified to make psychological interventions in a child's life. It's important to me because I have two granddaughters in public school. I object to the language of Senate Bill 268, Senate Bill 268, that conflates sexual orientation with gender identity, all in the same breath. People who are same-sex attracted are not the same as those who reject their own biology. Nor should every child be labeled and required to state their pronouns or observe others' pronouns. This targets non-conforming youth. For a child to say they are trans or non-binary is a red flag. This cult belief system and its practitioners do irreversible harm. No one should enforce any belief system upon the families of Massachusetts. We should treat gender identity with skepticism. Senate Bill 268, the Healthy Youth Act, is euphemism for lying to children and confusing them. Sex education should be factual. Look at the list on page four of this bill, line 12. Transgender is a contentious belief. Intersex? People with disorders of sexual development request not to be included in this. Agender? Everyone has a sex. That cannot be changed. Queer? Oh, it's strange, a hateful slur that cannot be reclaimed. This indoctrination steers healthy children on pathway to medical harm. Puberty blockers stunt their growth and mental development. Wrong-sex hormones defeat their endocrine system. Surgeries render them medical patients for life with loss of sexual function, loss of fertility, incontinence, and dependence on painkillers. So-called gender care has been debunked in WPATH files, which has recently been released. We see that the practitioners, clinicians admit they're experimenting on young people without informed consent. The patients are too young, or autistic, or mentally ill, or abused, or foster children. There's no follow-up. A desister or detransitioner who comes back to the doctor for follow-up gets turned away. Massachusetts has been the gold standard of medical care. Do you want to see our state go down in the annals of malpractice along with practitioners of lobotomy and thalidomide? If you wish to avoid playing a role in the biggest medical scandal of our time, keep gender theory out of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha, for your testimony. As an out and very proud lesbian and member of the queer community, that was very hard for me to hear. That said, we are a nonpartisan group that represents all women and all voices. So I appreciate your testimony and that reminder. And we, we do, I also should say, thank you for saying that. We do endorse and support the Healthy Youth Act. And next, I would like to, let me see, do we have Lynn Newkirk online?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you very much to the Mass Commission on Status of Women. I appreciate you doing this. My name is Lynn Newkirk. I live in Weymouth. And I'm the Board Treasurer for Mass Care. That's a campaign for single-payer healthcare. I want to mention that our Executive Director, Kimberly Connors, definitely wanted to be here tonight, but she just had some dental surgery yesterday and it was, it was not working for her, speaking or with her pain meds. So anyhow, I'm here. But I want to talk about our current healthcare system. We face many challenges as women. And just a couple of the ways I'm just going to touch on. Infant mortality in the United States ranks 54th out of 227 countries. In 2022, that was 5.44 deaths per 1,000. And black infant mortality is almost double the national average. And the rate of maternal deaths is 32.9 per 100,000, where the countries of, I need to put my glasses on, Australia, Austria, Japan, and Spain, they're all around two to three deaths compared to our 32.9. So we have challenges in that way, but also many women in our current system are forced to stay in abusive, harmful relationships because they're reliant on healthcare from their spouse. And that shouldn't be. Women should be able to, you know, have healthcare without having to worry about being forced to stay in a situation like that. And as Mika had talked about, maternity wards are also being shut down. There were four hospitals closed since 2018. And Lemonster was being the last one in the fall. And it's creating a great burden on our different communities, in particular, women. And basically, I think we need a single payer system where we put people over profits and prioritize people. And I'm very thankful that the Mass Commission on the Status of Women has been supportive of this. And we do have two bills with the State House. Unfortunately, they were just sent to study today, but they are House 1239 and Senate 744. And we will be introducing these bills again next year. So we hope you'll stay with us and continue to support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next in person, maybe Ryan Eng. Like oh for 10 here. Okay. How about Pega Rouhani? Marlene O'Brien? We're going to try. Marlene, no, okay. We are going to go to Grace Ross.
Hi.
Hi, Grace.
Okay.
We can.
You can. So my name's Grace Ross and I'm the coordinator of the Mass Alliance Against Predatory Lending. I had hoped to share some images with you, but I'm having problems with my computer letting me do it. Were you, in the last hearing, did anybody present about the studies related to discrimination in the housing courts, the evictions, et cetera?
Yes, we've had quite a bit of testimony related to housing and eviction. So please feel free to share anything you can add. Absolutely.
Well, I'm just wondering, so maybe I'll send you the images later as part of a report. But there's a study that shows that, well, the state has a dashboard that follows evictions. And evictions have skyrocketed. The physical eviction notices, there's a week in the last few months where they gave out 265 physical eviction notice authorizations from the housing courts in one week. Evictions are through the roof. There's an ACLU study from Massachusetts showing that if you're black and correcting for population size, you have a 2.4 times more chance of being a defendant. And that defendants in eviction cases lose 98% of the time. And if you look at black women, the statistics are even worse in comparison to white folks in general, which means we've essentially got a direct pipeline from being a black woman renter or occupant, like the folks I work with, post an illegal foreclosure and ending up in an eviction, and they're through the roof, as I said, in terms of the numbers. And we now know that in the counties where constables are used to evict, as opposed to mostly sheriffs, constables have to have been trained, as do the sheriffs, but they've had their training under the Police Reform Act from 2020, because they are going to be threatening to restrain you against your will. And that legislation was passed to try and ensure that we don't have any George Floyd-style lynchings, excuse the terminology, but that's accurate in Massachusetts. But who's most likely to end up in that situation? A black woman and her family. And we have to address the systematic use of evictions in a housing court system that is overwhelmingly and essentially just extraordinarily biased in terms of who's getting evicted. So we've got a very dangerous pipeline here. I work with folks who are dealing with illegal foreclosures. The Equal Credit Opportunity Act was passed federally in the 1970s because to get a mortgage as a woman at that point, you were regularly expected to bring a doctor's note proving that you had had a hysterectomy. The change in that by the 80s and 90s allowed women on their own credit to begin to get homes. But what that did was to set women up, of all races, to fall into the treatment that has been at least 150 years, the treatment of African-American men, which is that if you are one of the lucky few who can get a home and a mortgage, you are given a mortgage that is unaffordable and that is intentionally planned to be foreclosed upon. Therefore, there's now lots of studies showing that the getting of a home and being given a mortgage is actually the greatest path to having your wealth stripped. We've seen this intergenerationally in black communities for literally a century and a half. But women heads of household of all races are now also caught up in this same pattern. And it means that we are seeing wealth stripping from women heads of households. Those who can find a way to buy a home are then losing a lifetime's worth of wealth, often within four to six years of being foreclosed. We are still in a historic rate of foreclosures. And while the moratoriums we all fought for under the beginning of COVID essentially zeroed it out briefly, the foreclosure rates 2023 over 2022 was a 90% increase in Massachusetts. We are back in figures rivaling the statistics in 2006. The peak of the bubble, et cetera, folks may remember, was in 2007, 2008. So we're already back in historic rates that we haven't seen since, actually, the American Revolution. So it's a very serious time, and we are trying desperately to get our top court, the Supreme Judicial Court, to take up discrimination in homeownership. They obviously need to do it in evictions as well. Because our constitution, our legislature, in 1976 changed the first article of the Massachusetts Bill of Rights to include not just the right to own, possess, and then protect your property, but made it so that it couldn't be abridged or denied on the basis of gender, race, color, creed, or nation of origin. That should have protected everybody, but it turns out that our top court in Massachusetts has never taken a case related to equal right to own property since our constitution was amended in 1976. The same racist and sexist practices that led to the huge movements to end redlining and the movement of women to get equal credit have never been reviewed for compliance by our top court. One specific thing, we are looking for legislators right now to take the archaic language that a woman has to go through her husband to get protections from a criminal attempt to take their right to live in their house, their possession, what's known as eviction. We have a criminal statute to protect us in theory, but women can only access it through their husbands. So we're looking at an area of law that should have been changed 50 years ago, and we are back in the Ice Ages on it. So there's a lot of things we would ask the commission's help on, but I wanted to give you an overview. And I know a few of our homeowner women who are fighting illegal foreclosures based on discriminatory and shockingly outrageously predatory loans hope to speak tonight, but that's the context. I should say, we are asking the legislature for oversight hearings over the housing court and the eviction situation, and I'll let you know as that progresses because we absolutely need women's voices fighting for this because it's just, it's where we lose our wealth.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to pause and ask if anyone in the room wants to give a testimony. If you didn't sign up, you are welcome to testify. So if you would like to, can raise. Yeah, please.
I do want to say that most recently, a new committee has been formed to review archaic laws in the Commonwealth and to make changes. Of course, that's going to take time. But if there, again, if you have bill numbers that are related to the language that requires a woman to go through her husband, perhaps there could be some advocacy among and to the group that's working on. perhaps there could be some advocacy among and to the group that's working on the archaic laws to maybe move that one closer to the top of the list. So if you can share that and put it in the chat, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. And we have, we've continued to add either laws, bills, or articles to give additional sort of expansion to what we're talking about in the chat. So while that was in the room, if anyone's thinking about testifying, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the next person virtually. If you do want to testify in the room or virtually, if you do virtually, please enter it in the chat. If you'd like to in the room, just raise your hand and I will make sure to flag you next. So next, I would like to welcome on Zoom Rosa Fernandez.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to share a few words. My name is Rosa Fernandez. I work for Health Equity Partnership of North Central Mass. It's a coalition that serves twenty-seven communities in the North Region. And I just wanted to just share some experiences that women face in healthcare. I kind of agreed with a lot of the comments that were being said tonight, so I don't want to be redundant. And I'm not even sure. I was just thinking of our priority areas and the areas that we talk about and within our health improvement plan and its access to access to healthy foods and for women's health. I'm also thinking about seeing nurses within our department of emergency department. Because women are facing traumatic experiences and are in cultures and they need specialized help when it comes to sexual assaults and trauma. And really getting organizations or support around trauma-informed care because of traumatic experiences that women face that needs more attention and more sensitivity to addressing these issues. There's several issues and I don't want to take more than the three minutes, but I really share the same sentiments of those prior that spoke, especially for Indigenous and BIPOC communities. There's just, I always feel the need to share some words and share a presence for their voices. Sometimes it's intimidating structures that are just being harmed by a lot of these systems. It makes it more, it makes it difficult to come and speak. And so sometimes I feel that pressure, not only for the organization I work for, but just as a woman of color to come and stand and share a few of the same and admire our allies as well, who are in this with us and really fighting for equity. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity and the space to speak.
Thank you very much. So I do have our final final person to give testimony that's on Zoom. If anyone else in the room wants to speak after, or if you'd still like to speak and share some thoughts on Zoom, please just enter it in the chat or flag me in the room. So next, I'm gonna welcome Ciara Derns.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name's Ciara. I'm the current advocacy coordinator here at the YWCA Cambridge. We are Cambridge's largest housing provider of single-room occupancy rentals. And we have eleven families in our emergency shelter. We also have a mission to eliminate racism and empower women. And we just want to throw it out there as well that we support your current twenty-three, twenty-four legislative priorities. And we are greatly appreciative of the MCSW's dedication to making the Commonwealth a better place for women and families. I want to bring attention to the frightening different patterns we are seeing here in the Commonwealth and ask the MCSW to look at sex and human trafficking as a priority in the near future. So we are seeing migrants who come here seeking asylum, being forced into human trafficking trade. We know all around statewide, we have seen a rise in brothel activity, especially out of the Boston and Cambridge area. A little bit sensitive of a topic, viewer discretion advised. But I must keep this story anonymous due to privacy concerns for the survivor. However, I knew a woman who had attempted to migrate to the state seeking job opportunity. However, she didn't understand what getting a legal documented job really looked like, which made her vulnerable. The woman was, this woman was promised a green card, visa, et cetera, to have this other woman house her as a housekeeper. But she never gave her the documentation and she was only paid three dollars an hour. She didn't have any of her documentation either. And really, what are you supposed to do in a situation like that? How are you supposed to escape? Her goal ultimately is to come to the state and she is currently over a thousand miles outside the state at the moment. She was paid three dollars an hour and she is a victim of trafficking and currently lives in the United States as an undocumented immigrant. She is undocumented, not out of choice. And many migrants find themselves in the same patterns and are extremely limited to social services as a result. Furthermore, if you're a non-English speaker in poverty, a migrant, or a woman of color, sorry, a little bit of speech impediment, statistics are far more likely to be, you are far more likely to be a victim of sex trafficking. And with the rise of migrants coming to the state, we know current conditions can be hazardous for this population. Our residents are also among the more vulnerable populations because many come from a background of poverty, immigration, and domestic abuse, all which can make a person far more likely to be trafficked. These traffickers know what vulnerability looks like. And we know we need essential signage and trainings in hotels that just presented in S ten forty-six and H twenty-four sixteen, an act requiring human trafficking recognition training for certain hospitality workers. The hospitality industry is the third most popular venue for human trafficking activity based off the human trafficking hotline statistics for this Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we know these victims involved in sex trafficking should not be penalized with criminal convictions and must be connected to resources to preserve economic well-being while the source of trafficking is found. That's why the passage of seventeen fifty-eight, an act to prevent human trafficking and improve the health and safety of sex workers, is so essential. We are seeing an all-round spike in brothel activity across the Commonwealth. And we must protect our women and children from the trade, which is why we are asking for human and sex trafficking bills to be an upcoming priority for the MCSW. A second priority as well, we would also like to point out a policy priority regarding the legislature favorably passing a ten percent increase in TANF benefits under the Let Our Kids Out of Deep Poverty Bill. Apologies, I lost the bill number. But however, Governor Healey recently struck it down in favor of other funding. We know that a family of three can barely feed themselves off the cash assistance ceiling, which is currently seven hundred and eighty-three dollars a month, when the deep poverty threshold currently for a family is one thousand and sixty-seven dollars a month. That's why we are asking legislators, supporters, and policymakers to look at the increase in these benefits for families by twenty percent in two thousand and twenty-five, because deep poverty should cease to exist in the Commonwealth. While these priorities are on vastly different sides of different stories, I hope that MCSW can consider prioritizing both these issues in the near future. Protecting women and children benefits everyone across the Commonwealth. And once again, thank you to commissioners for your continued support for women across the Commonwealth.
I just want to raise awareness and let you know that the Metro West Regional Commission of the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women proudly partnered with Mass Bay Community College and organized the very first Human Trafficking Awareness Breakfast just this past January at Mass Bay Community College with actor and activist Ashley Judd. I don't know if you know, but she's a very, very strong leader in dealing with this topic. And that event specifically aimed to elevate the awareness and educate the public on all the critical issues revolving around human trafficking and the commercial sex trade. But I also want to point out to you that Suffolk County District Attorney Ken Hayden, and he spoke there along with Worcester DA Joseph Early, two incredible DAs who are working very hard on this issue. And feel free at any time to reach out to them. They are incredibly active and passionate and driven on this. And I'm sure you're aware of that already. But we can never do enough to keep raising the level of awareness. And I'm very proud that that was a big moment in January for helping to do that through the commission and our regional commission in Metro West.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So I have a few names that came in the chat. Esther Degoto. Are you here on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Esther. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Esther Goto and I am a resident of Beverly, Massachusetts. Today, I come before you not merely as a witness, but as a victim and a voice against the deeply ingrained sexist pattern of predatory lending that has stripped countless women of their wealth, dignity, and dreams, myself included. I am originally from Kenya. My journey to America was driven by the dire need to escape violence and the targeted killings of my relatives in my homeland, as well as personal assault. My sole mission was to secure nothing more than a sanctuary for my daughter and myself. A quest for safety that tragically led me into the hands of a predatory broker, who, and be no waste to me, would exploit my vulnerability in trust. He deceitfully inflated my income on loan applications and snaring me in a predatory mortgage for a property, binding me to a property grossly overvalued by more than two hundred thousand dollars. And it was a home plagued with undisclosed defects, including a hazardous sewage leak, a fact I discovered only after taking possession. This broker exploited my trust, my lack of familiarity with the American mortgage process, and my savings of nearly a hundred thousand dollars, which I had amassed from the sale of my belongings and relentless work upon arriving in the U.S. He orchestrated a predatory loan scheme, not only overcharging for the property, but binding me into a loan designed to fail. Under the guise of helping me reduce interest rates through substantial payments, a practice I later discovered to be illegal. He falsely promised that I could mitigate the loan's exorbitant cost over time, a deception that masked illegal practices and unnecessary fees. The repercussions were catastrophic. As a single mother striving to provide a secure home for my daughter, I undertook three jobs, an effort that greatly compromised my health. The financial strain was relentless. Within just three years, I had been overcharged by more than fifty-two thousand dollars. And due to the malignant structuring of the loan, the debt only escalated, ensuring that I would be trapped in a never-deepening cycle of debt and also ensuring I would owe more at the loan's end than at its inception, despite my payments. This ordeal is not merely my story, but reflects a broader, more disturbing pattern of criminal, sexist financial exploitation, a violation of human rights and dignity faced by thousands of women who attempt to achieve homeownership, only to be preyed upon due to their gender, race, status and status of immigration. What I am describing underscores the urgent need for this commission's intervention to amplify our voices, women's voices, to ensure the enforcement of laws designed to protect us and to uphold the principles of equality enshrined in our constitution and our Bill of Rights. In solidarity with those who have suffered in silence, I call upon this commission to champion our cause, ensuring that no woman stands alone against the goliaths of sexist predatory lending. Together, let us uphold the promise of equality and justice for all. We seek justice, not just for the restitution of our financial losses, but for the affirmation of our rights to many predatory, fair financial practices. We must mobilize the legal and legislative frameworks to eradicate these exploitative practices, safeguarding the rights and the futures of women, immigrants, and persons of color across our state. I implore you, I implore this commission, to stand with us, champion the enforcement of just laws, and ensure that the promise of equality, safety, and prosperity is accessible to all, free from the shadows of exploitation and discrimination. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter.
Thank you very much. I believe that comes to the end of anyone that registered or notified us that they wanted to testify. If I missed anyone, please speak up now or snag me in the chat. If you did want to testify or didn't want to testify but wanted to share your story, please contact us. The contacts are in the Zoom. There's contacts at the table. And you can certainly see any of us or any of our staff here tonight to get the contact information for where to send it. We include all testimony in our reports and follow-up. So I thank everyone that had the courage to come and share their stories with us. I just want to thank you all so much for joining us. Wait, I'm so sorry. Did somebody say they want to testify?
Hello?
Oh. Wonderful. Please join us. Welcome.
Sorry, I was on mute.
I didn't see you. Please.
Oh, my name is Corrette Young and I was, I did register this afternoon. So I can just give you something briefly, hopefully, about a mortgage predatory loan. And I was just listening to Esther and a lot of what she said is what I would say also. So do you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Corrette Young and I'm from Weymouth, Massachusetts. And I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak briefly on the mortgage predatory loan that I have experienced personally over the years. It involves my mother, whose name was Carol Young. When she refinanced her mortgage loan as a trustee of a revocable trust for two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for thirty years with JP Morgan Chase. And the interesting thing about it was she was age ninety-six at the time of that she obtained this loan. The mortgage broker shopped her loan to several different banks, one of them being the one that she held a prior HELOC with. But they were denied and so he ended up apparently with Chase. Sorry. The mortgage payment was approximately twice her monthly income of Social Security at twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And she basically paid on it for two and a half years until she defaulted. So there was something wrong right from the beginning of this particular loan, when you're paying double what you can pay. So she defaulted in November of two thousand and eight. And uh with the two thousand and eight payment, um and in December, um the next month, she was um diagnosed with cancer of the pancreas and died at age ninety-nine in default. Um she actually, or I actually received the notice of default at at home um the day she died, which was unfortunate, of course. Um and she, well, she never saw it, but anyway, um. So um it did say on there that it was a Fannie Mae loan, that the Fannie Mae was the mortgagie. And so Chase has been claiming all these years that they are the holder of the the note and the mortgage. And um which is um quite incorrect because um Fannie has been um hiding in the shadows. So um so my question to um, I guess, anybody who was willing to ask was, how could somebody who's age ninety-six um be expected to satisfy a thirty-year loan? Um, you know, and pay it off, which would have made her like a hundred and twenty-six years old before, you know, she would have paid it off, which was um, of course, um a bit odd and and could never be done. So um I believed that, you know, the loan was predatory and it was never expected, it was expected to fail, and that um they never expected to have her even um satisfied the loan, which I think would be uh against the contract. So um anyway, um so I inherited the house essentially uh when she died, and I'm as her only child. And um so I have been fighting Chase ever since in some form or another. So it's been um about fourteen years, and I'm now eighty-one years old. And I have been in multiple courts multiple times and um fighting um Chase with loan modifications and that sort of thing that have all been denied because I don't qualify for my own loan. And um so recently, um Chase, um well, and I was in bankruptcy court just um and um the the re- the stay was relieved, and Chase scheduled an auction on my house. And um so um I am now at eighty-one, um and I was never a borrower on the loan. I did not sign it. So I had no liability in it, but Chase had told me that they were going to take the house in order to satisfy the um the loan, but my mother actually signed it as a as a trust, but that's a lot of detail that I don't necessarily, you know, have to go into at this point. So um the um so now at eighty-one, I'm I'm having to, you know, look at homelessness and, you know, being evicted and um the the same sort of thing that other people are are going through in this and going to these courts and and I'm not finding really any justice um from from them. And also, the the note was manipulated, and there's a whole hu- bunch of other problems that, you know, have have occurred um over the years that um, you know, violations that have have occurred. So um anyway, I just um wanted to um just tell you my story and um just let you know that I have been seeking justice as well. And um uh I have been working with um Grace Ross for a number of years. And um I couldn't have done all of this and been in all these courts I've been in, doing it pro se myself because just like other people, their, you know, their credit has been ruined, they've lost savings, you know, I've spent, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars on lawyers and savings and had to do it uh pro se uh after a while. And um so I couldn't have done it without her, and um I thank her for all her efforts in our behalf. Um and so, thank you. Um I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my story.
Thank, thank, thank you so much. That was um certainly tough to listen to, and our hearts are with you, and we are certainly fighting with you. Ms. Hall?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that um state representatives and senators can help individuals in their districts who are facing this kind of predatory lending. And it's very important that you realize as voters that you contact your elected officials that you elect to represent you, and you ask them for their help when you are faced with this kind of predatory behavior from a financial institution.
Now, believe me, I have done that. I I did. I contacted my local senator, and I've contacted a local um the the congressman, um Stephen Lynch, uh his office, to try to get information out of um Fannie Mae and was unsuccessful. Um so I've I've tried all kinds of things, believe me.
I'm sorry to hear that. It was unsuccessful. Um do you feel that the equity in the home is being threatened at all um at this point?
Well, of course, now um they've sold, you know, they've they've sold the house, quote, um but they're they're um what it is is there's no, I have no equity because they've they've essentially sold the house because there's nothing I can get out of it if uh there to be believed. So it's essentially the same thing as taking the equity from, you know, from me, uh as far as I can see. So um hopefully, I'll be in several courts to to try to reverse it, but um I, my experience in some of the courts lately has been that there's not a lot of justice to go around.
Yeah, that is unfortunately true on on so many of these issues. Well, the elevating your voice here is certainly another window, so we will um be sure to include your testimony and all of the impact that that's having with with what we're doing. So thank you so much for sharing.
Right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Last, I believe I have Marnique Rivera.
Yes, thank you for saying that correctly. Can you hear me?
I can.
Um so my name's Marnique Rivera. I am a single mom from Pittsfield, Mass. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony. Um, I went and to buy a home. I was the first homeowner of my family forever. Um, and I was told I was getting a really good deal. I signed a contract and um suppose a a supposed mortgage and mortgage note. It turned out it was more than the property was actually worth. Um I signed a note with, or I signed with um New York Company that turns out that doesn't even really exist. Um and I've been since told that the mortgage was really with Countrywide. The first major US government settlement on racism was with Bank of America, that purchased Countrywide supposedly, but I never saw a penny of that. Uh it turns out that my mortgage origination paperwork says that I'm white, non-Hispanic, and the last name Rivera might have been a tip-off. That's my maiden last name. Um, I would think that was a giveaway. Then I had a major health issue. I was injured at work, and um it just kind of spiraled from there. I was supposedly offered loan modifications. None of them were any good. I was in the middle of negotiating one um when I looked outside. I had never gotten a response from Fannie Mae. Um and I looked outside and saw an auctioneer or an auctioneer on my lawn um trying to auction off my home. I didn't know about it. I wasn't notified about it, and I still hadn't gotten an answer from Fannie Mae. So in my understanding, that was illegal. They're not supposed to do that while they are trying to negotiate a modification with you. Um, and so I never received any notification. Now, after all of this time, I now know that the real owner of the mortgage all along was Fannie Mae. I was lied to about that since the beginning of uh in in two thousand and six, even though Fannie Mae gives better loan mods if you knew about them. I was denied who the real lender was, which is illegal in Massachusetts. The documents that I supposedly fell behind showed up in a court case a few years ago. They have criminally digitally altered. Um, they're trying to deny me the fact that actually the mortgage no longer legally existed under a Massachusetts law when they saw, when they went to foreclose. Um, and then thank God, I, you know, I met Massachusetts Alliance Against Predatory Lending. I was, they had actually scared me out of the home. I was told that I had to leave. I had two minor children that I would have to leave in a matter of three days, that the sheriff would show up on my doorstep. And unfortunately, at that time, I did not know my rights, and it worked, and I left, not voluntarily, but because I was afraid that I was going to be homeless with two children, I left the home. Um and once I met Grace and the organization, uh we were able to fight back and get me back into the home, and we've been fighting ever since. Uh my girls have grown up in the home all of the time. It's almost going on eight years that I've been back into the home and fighting in the court system. Um, the record is clear, an overpriced and illegal mortgage with a non-existent corporation in the pattern of predatory lending to a single fe- female head of household who was Latina, they hit all of the predatory discriminatory markers across the board. I'm still waiting to even get heard for justice. I'm just one of millions of women head of households across the United States. We are fighting and asking for your help. Please hear us. We are tired of waiting for the Massachusetts courts to wake up and smell justice. Doesn't seem like they are. The legislature needs an oversight hearing today on these systemic violations, and I thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank, thank you very much. Well, we certainly hear you, so we fight with you.
I appreciate that.
And with that, I'm gonna have Ms. Elena wrap us up.
Right. Thank you so much for joining us for our first in-person hearing uh twenty twenty-four. While the issues that we face are multiple, together we can tackle anything. We invite you to share your testimony with us in writing to inform our legislative priorities and future data reports on these crucial issues. We value your input and would be grateful if you would take our brief exit survey. You can scan the QR code upon leaving, or please click the link in the chat or follow up via email. And we also invite you to stay plugged into the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. You can join our newsletter, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or LinkedIn, or join us for any of our upcoming events. Some of those important dates include our Girls Empowerment Leadership Initiative Jelly, which will be Saturday, April twentieth, and our legislative briefing Thursday, May twenty-third at ten AM. These links will also be shared in the chat. And again, thank you for joining us here in person and on Zoom. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.